Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 11, 2014 Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the Board's permission, we do have three people from STA here to talk about item 8.1, and with the Board's permission, I'd like to move that up to this point in the agenda so they don't have to stay here and listen to us review bills and so forth. So, Dr. Freeman, you want to introduce them or the agenda item? It's technically under your...
Sure. We listed that as the first item on my agenda. I have reported to the Board previously regarding a school bus accident that took place on the evening of May 28. Board members have asked to have representatives from STA here today. I would be happy to introduce Joe Perici. He's our Regional Director and ask Joe to introduce the rest of his team that he's brought with him today and ask him to give an overview and respond to the Board's questions. I think we're going to need you at the podium, Joe, probably all of you at the podium.
Hi, I'm Joe Perici, General Manager, Eastern Connecticut for STA Transportation. Also, I've been a manager here in Guilford since 1996-97, before I took my promotion, and now Marie Illingworth is the manager here in Guilford. And this is Debbie Rabidu. She's in charge of safety for Eastern Connecticut. She is our safety supervisor who did most of the investigation into the driver who had the rear end collision with our other driver. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, maybe you could just summarize what your investigation showed in terms of what happened, what the event was, how it was caused, and I recognize, you know, it may be not complete, but what do you know at this point?
Deb, you want to elaborate on, I mean, here's what I do know from Debbie, and I'll have her, you know, in case I miss anything. They were coming home from a charter, and they were at a light, and the first bus started to go on, and the second bus started to follow, but she had looked into her crossover mirror, which is what we call on the side of both sides of the bus, and when she looked and came back into view, she was on the bus and collided with the bus. And she was clearly following too closely. I think most of the investigation just all points to following too closely. It's something that, you know, we're trained to have a five-second delay in between buses. It's not always perfect when you're at a traffic light, or if you're in the parking lot at a school, you all notice how the buses are right behind each other because then we would be way out in the street. So, it's at a traffic light, it's a little different. She was too close. She was not focused on the front of her bus, her frontal zone, and she went to check her mirror, came back to the front of the bus, and not realized that the bus in front of her was still, you know, too close to her and collided with the bus. We did review her hours, as far as how many hours she had driven consecutively. Debbie found that everything was within the standards for her hours. She had rested enough time in between the morning run, the midday, the afternoon, and then on the charter, they were resting before the actual charter left. So, that was the first thing that we did, was look into her rest cycle to make sure that she had the proper rest for driving a school bus. Deb, can you elaborate? Anything else that I missed yet?
You're doing good so far, Joe.
All right. You know, nobody ever wants to see, we don't ever want to have an accident, but they do happen. I wish I can guarantee that they don't happen, but they do. We made sure that her hours were correct. We made sure that the braking system on the bus was inspected before it went into service. It did go up to Daco for repairs on the body. There was no repairs made to the brakes. We were adamant about, you know, nobody touches the brakes until the state inspector inspects the bus, which happened last week when we got the bus back from Daco. It was inspected by the inspector. He passed it. We forwarded that report to the Superintendent's Office, as well as, what else do we do? The driver, let me stick with the, you know, she had enough rest. The bus was properly maintained and safe. You know, it's just driver error. If she was somebody who had any other history of accidents, we probably would not have asked the Superintendent to keep her on. Myself, Marie, and Debbie all said that we would let this driver drive our kids even after the accident. She's had a clean driving record her whole history with our company and with the company before, you know, when we were first student briefly, laylaw. You know, I'm confident she's an excellent driver, and we, again, if she had any blemishes on her record, we wouldn't have recommended to the Board, in fact, we wouldn't even brought it to the Board of Education. We would have just said that, you know, sorry, you know, we're going to have to terminate you because of this accident, but we all felt confident that she's an excellent driver normally, made a mistake, one that any one of us could have made, you know, driving a school bus. It's, you know, it's unfortunate, but she made a human error, and we felt that we can keep her with us, so that's why we brought it to the Superintendent's Office. And then after we both had talked and agreed, we gave Patty Reese extensive training back before we allowed her back out on the road. Debbie did it personally herself as opposed to one of our other normal trainers. Debbie did all the training herself, and Deb, can you elaborate on what you found?
During the retraining, first of all, I took out her file and looked for any past history, and there was none. So, what I always do is look for a cause or multiple causes of what happened. Went through our library of videos and DVDs, and we viewed some together just to kind of bring her back to basics, and then actually went back to the intersection. I had her drive, and we went through the intersection three or four times. You can imagine in a big bus trying to find a place to turn around and go back again and turn around and go back again, but I felt absolutely confident with her behind the wheel, very remorseful. She just, she still can't believe that it happened, but when I pointed out a few things of the proper following distance, you know, at an intersection, we train to always, before you even move your vehicle, look left, look right, and look left again, and then also look in front of you before the bus moves. And by the time she had done her left, right, left scan, she was already moving. Unbeknownst to her, the bus in front of her had already been halted by that other red traffic light.
So, going forward, in order to try to prevent these type of accidents, not only just in the town of Guilford now, we have implemented some more safety training features to prevent this. There will be daily announcements. There will be postings throughout the trailer. It will be brought up at every safety meeting in all of STA and Connecticut. It's something that we've had, you know, happen in other locations throughout New England, and it was brought up at our, you know, one of our summer conferences, you know, we were all talking, and we said, hey, this happened here, this happened there. So, we said, let's get this out to the drivers. They need to know more about safe following distances, and we're going to incorporate that more into our training than we already do do. Deb, anything else? And that's our plan for the future, to train the drivers even more about our safe following distance.
Can we talk a little bit about the hours worked? I mean, when did this driver come on work that day? When did she report to work?
She reported in her normal time at six, at seven? Seven o'clock, and then she drives till about 9:15, and then she's off the clock. Did she do a midday run that day?
No, she doesn't do a midday. She came back at two, and then that usually ends around 4:30.
Okay. She came back at...
She came back at two, and then usually all the runs are usually done by 4:30.
Okay, and when did this bus go back out on the charter?
I want to say they needed a pickup like around almost six, and then they dropped off probably 45 minutes from here, and they were down until they got out at 10:35. So, she wasn't driving until...
Okay, so, and then the expectation was that she would return with the bus maybe 11, 11:30, and report for duty the next day at seven?
Well, it was depending on the time. They were supposed to get, leave there at 10 o'clock, and...
But, you know, these things change.
Right.
But what, I guess what I'm driving at is, it seems to me that admittedly, she has some time off, but, I mean, this driver doesn't live in Guilford. She lives some distance away. I just wonder if having her drive from 7:00 in the morning until 11:30 at night, even if she gets the breaks in between, is really the safest policy. I mean, maybe if you're going to do a night charter, maybe you need to have somebody who didn't drive that day do it.
Deb, can you address the hours of service, please?
We follow the federal hours of service, which is any CDL driver cannot drive a vehicle for more than 10 hours. A CDL vehicle, a CDL person cannot be on duty for more than 15 hours, including that 10-hour drive time. So, if you look in all of those facts, she was well within her hours at that time. She was not on duty for an excess of 15, and she was not behind the wheel driving for an excess of 10.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in any way implying that you're not complying with the federal standards. I'm talking about what I'm, I'm trying to focus on what's, what's something that might make some sense in the context of Guilford. I mean, if this driver, or any of your drivers, were all people who lived in Guilford, and when they were off the clock, they could go home and take a nap or something like that, that would be one thing, but I happen to know that this driver doesn't live in Guilford and doesn't live particularly close to Guilford, and I'm just thinking that, you know, that's a long day. That's a long day, and somebody made a mistake here. An experienced person made a mistake, and I find myself that, you know, by 11 o'clock at night, if I've been working since 7:00, you know, I might make a mistake, too. I just think that, you know, if we're going to do night charters, that maybe we ought to have a fresh driver.
Well, in regards to what you're saying, if the trip went much later on that night, I would think the bigger concern would be first thing in the morning. And then many times when drivers are out late, we'll say, you know, take your morning off, you can't drive, or if it was within the federal guidelines, they wouldn't be able to drive. But that's happened before where trips, sports trips have come back, you know, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, and we know they can't drive back at 6:30, you know, 6:15 in the morning. In this case, you know, she had ample rest, you know, the night before, and then throughout the day, she was, you know, had many breaks. I would think it would be more of a concern the next morning if she got back late, and I don't think that's what contributed to this accident.
But what I'm hearing moving forward, we have very few night events like this one. There's probably the graduation party...
The graduation party is a long one, right?
And an event like this one.
We take safeguards for the graduation party. This one was a long one. Other than that, you know, we're back by 12.
I mean, I would think learning from this event moving forward, when we have those evening events next year, I could ask Mr. Peterson to remind Marie when we're scheduling and look at our stable of drivers and see if we have somebody who didn't drive early that day or isn't driving early the next morning.
See if we can get somebody fresh to do this.
And partner with our office as we schedule those in the next year moving forward and see if...
Right, and I would even encourage staff, Board of Ed staff, the teachers on the field trip, the athletic, the sports coaches to voice their concern as well if they get back late on a trip and phone it into Marie. They have contact with Marie when the bus is out on the road the whole time on her cellphone and, you know, elaborate to her saying, geez, we've been out a long time. I wouldn't like this driver on the road tomorrow morning.
I can ask Mr. Bowden to meet with Mr. Masenti, Mr. Jarvis, and Mr. Peterson, who would be about the only people in districts who would be involved with scheduling such late-night events. Talk with them when scheduling these events to make sure they have a conversation with Marie, and we look proactively about driver scheduling around these events. Think both the morning of the event and the morning after the event to try to be more thoughtful in making those decisions.
Anyone else?
Any other questions? Any other comments, thoughts?
Thank you.
Okay, well, we appreciate your comment.
All right, thank you very much.
As I'm sure you know, safety of the children is important to all of us, and just want to make sure that we're all collectively trying to act reasonably moving forward, and we, of course, I think our experience with STA has been, how long have you been with us now? Six years or seven years, something like that?
STA, six, but us, more like 25 years. But we appreciate your input as well.
Yeah, the fact that we're not having these meetings regularly is...
Says a lot.
Well, it does say a lot, and I, you know, I actually have some personal experience from my day job with some, with another company that I won't identify, and there are different relations between school districts and bus companies than what we have here, and so we do appreciate all of your hard work and how committed you are to trying to make sure that student transport is as safe as it can reasonably be.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, so if we can go back to the agenda, we've got the minutes for July 14th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
Corrections, changes, additions, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, yeah, you were away, you're back. Ms. Renner, you did the bills this evening?
Yep, I did. I had the pleasure of reviewing the July bills that pertain to both the fiscal year we just completed, 2013-14, and also a small amount for the new year, 2014-15. We discussed at some length in the Operations Subcommittee both the detailed budget variance report line by line and also the specific bills that were paid. So, I'll talk about the old year first, I'll be chronological. In the 2013-14 year, we're reporting the final expenditures of the year. Expenditures for the month were $1,828,199.87, which is the amount that I'll ask you all to approve. And I think most notably, since that was the final month of the year, we can discuss where we are to end the year, which is just really wonderful. We're ending the budget year, returning a small amount to the town, unexpended, $43,000. But most importantly, we were able to, through savings in a number of budget lines, especially the special education area, through some of the restructuring that was done this past year, we've been able to contribute an additional $250,000 toward the Town and Board of Ed combined self-insured health fund, which has a deficit balance. So, we felt it was responsible and prudent to be able to put some of our extra money, so to speak, into that fund. So, that was the old year. And the specific expenditures that we discussed that were of interest were the payments made to, I believe, 14 of our retiring educators for their accumulated sick pay, which is only allowed for individuals who were employed by the town prior to a date in the late...
99.
99, 98?
I think 98.
Okay, so many of the teachers now do not have this benefit, but the amount that was paid out for these educators approximates $400,000. That was paid, the $250,000 I mentioned toward the self-insurance, the medical fund, and we also paid the balance of our pre, of our fuel contract for bus transportation. We had a contract to buy a certain number of gallons at a specified rate at the beginning of the year, and we had some excess available, so we're responsible for purchasing the remaining fuel on the contract. Any questions about the old year?
So, the number we're approving is for...
$1,828,199.87.
For, so that, and that's technically under June?
Yes.
Okay, so is there, let's do that motion first. Is there a motion that we approve those expenditures in the...
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Recused.
Recused, okay.
And then on the new year, the expenditures were $2,69,678.86. That's 5.2% of the entire budget compared to 5.17% last year, so it's very consistent. And really, all that that covers is what's happening during the summer, which is the full-time year-round administrators, their pay, also the summer program for special education, and some beginning-of-year expenses for things like software licenses for the entire year, dues for the entire year, some prepayments of special education tuition for a quarterly period or a semi-annual period rather than just a month. That's what makes up the bulk of that, $2 million.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the July 2014 expenditures in the amount of $2,69,678?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All so recused.
All right. You know, I feel almost compelled to, I guess I do feel compelled to say, you remember a year ago when we were proposing the budget, or a year and a half ago when we were proposing this fiscal year budget, the question that we got over and over was whether the tuition reduction, the outplacement's number was realistic. And not only was it realistic, we actually...
Conservative.
It was conservative, yeah. We were able to use, return some money to the town because of efficiencies in that with, I think it's fair to say, a much, a parental community that's much more supportive of the entire process, so it's really been an outstanding change. I don't, I think this is the first time since I've been on the Board where we actually, that was a lower number than we budgeted, and that number was low in itself.
And that's a result of the work of the teachers, the principals, and the Special Education Office, and the work that they have done to make sure that we had the programming and the support someplace, and so I really want to applaud all of the teachers throughout the system this year who helped make those students welcome and supported in their classrooms that led us to serve more of our kids at home, resulting in this happy side effect. The real core issue here is that we served more of our students at home. We have got more satisfied parents, better service for our children, and this was a happy result of that.
Yeah, I think I'd add parents frankly to the list of people who had a hand in it because, you know, they had a little bit of a leap of faith, too, right?
Yes.
They had to, you know, we're not sure about this, and I think people said, okay, we'll give it a shot, and in fact, it's turned out that we were able to deliver better services at a cheaper price.
And a very effective partnership.
It was terrific. Anything else on the financial front?
No.
Okay. Item 5, public forum for topics on the Board Agenda. You're it.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay. Communications, well, anybody, did anybody have any communications? I did get, I forwarded, I got an email about the Wednesday meeting. It was from somebody who can't be here, but I'll send that tomorrow. Anything else? All right. Student representatives, no report. We will have them in September or October?
Probably October. We may have our returning rep in September, but we'll have a full slate of reps by the October meeting.
Okay. 8.1, we've done the bus accident update. 8.2, update on summer hiring. Obviously, it is ongoing given the number of people that we're appointing during the meeting.
Yes. Last time I reported to you, I broke this out into three categories. At the administrative and director level, Mr. Bowden has begun vetting candidates for a food service director. He and I will be meeting with finalists for that position into next week, so we're moving that process forward. The paraprofessionals, I believe at this time, we are filled except for one resignation I believe we received this week. One of our paras has accepted a teaching position, so I believe we're down to just one paraprofessional vacancy. Teaching positions, we had 26 vacancies going into the summer. 21 of those have been hired to date. We have five remaining vacancies on which we are still working at this time. We do believe that we will have a majority of those filled before the opening of school. We may be opening with one or two substitutes in place as we complete the teacher hires. I do want to note, it is of note, that one of those five remaining vacancies is the math coaching position. We have talked with you quite a bit about the importance of that position. We ran a very thorough search. We made an offer. The candidate that we offered our position to was a very attractive candidate who honestly drew more than one offer, and he accepted a different offer than the one that we have made. Dr. Keane and I have been recruiting hard for this position. We have been accessing our networks. Most recently, we were talking to Lucy West. If you Google Lucy West, you'll find that she is one of the national thought leaders in mathematics instruction. She knows all about Guilford now. She knows the work that we are doing, and she is out looking for a placement for us. She would very much like to put a promising young professional developer in this district, and so at this point, as I have said to this Board multiple times before, we would rather open with a vacancy and continue looking into the school year than to open with the wrong person, but I did want to note that because I have talked about that position frequently in front of this Board. It is an important hire. It was an important investment. It was important, it was an important element in our budget presentation. I do want to note, that does not leave our middle-level math teachers unsupported. In addition to the math coach this year, we talked a little bit about this in the operations meeting, we are also contracting with IFL for support in mathematics instruction. We will be working with a mathematics fellow out of IFL. Our teachers in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will be receiving, I want to say, six days of professional development and support directly from the math fellow, and we will be working with IFL collaboratively to develop units within the new math curriculum that we have structured. So, we'll continue looking. We'll continue working with the supports that we have in place, and we will keep this Board updated.
Can I just stop here for a second? Can we go back to Dr. DeMell? Do you have, since you're the only person here, do you want to ask, obviously, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but do you want to ask any questions you have now? We can move that up on the agenda?
I want to do my...
Okay, that's fine. I'm just offering in case, okay. All right, go ahead. So, where are we then on the...
That's it on summer hiring.
So, teacher evaluation?
Yep.
Supervision evaluation.
Yeah, teacher supervision and evaluation. In your packet, you have received the updated evaluation plan. I was not able to provide that to you earlier because we submitted it to the state as required on June 11th of this year, and I've yet to hear back from the state on our submission. So, I held this as long as I could, hoping I'd be able to report to you that it has been reviewed and approved by the state. I present it to you tonight because we are required to present it to you before implementing it as we move into the new school year. I'll hit the highlights. As we ran this plan out from last year, we piloted this plan with one-third of our certified staff spread throughout the school system, one-third of our teaching staff. All of our administrative staff participated in the new evaluation plan, and as we piloted the plan, we looked to see what we would learn from the plan. The evaluation committee met regularly through the second half of the school year. I shadowed every principal as they went through one of the observation cycles, and what we did was make modifications to the plan moving forward. We have tried to continue to focus this plan on student performance and on helping teachers to perform better in the classroom tomorrow. We have continued to de-emphasize the process of collecting data points in order to rate teachers. Some of the big changes, last year, all observations, whether formal or informal, were formally scored and rated, and the teacher got a 1 to 4 rating for each observation, which then was aggregated into an annual rating for the observation cycle. With state, well, I don't want to say approval because they haven't approved the plan yet, but with state input into our thinking, the plan this year separates informal observations from formal observations. Only formal observations are scored and rated. Informal observations happen regularly. They happen for all certified teachers in the school district. They require the teacher and the administrator to have a formal meeting afterwards in which there is discussion, dialogue, and targeted feedback that is given to the teacher. There's a lot of questioning about how would you do this better moving forward, but informals are designed to be formative and developmental in nature, and only the formals will be rated and scored. We think that that will allow the teachers to remain more in the developmental mindset and not get caught in how well did I do and what's my grade, but what did you see and how can you help me do better tomorrow? As we looked at how we write our student learner outcomes, we thought very much in the same way. I will note that the evaluation plan has been decoupled from any certified testing for a second year moving for, any standardized testing for a second year moving forward. So, we write goals based on data, but our teachers have the ability to decide what data they will collect, how they will use that data to inform their goal writing, and then at the end of the year must measure how they did based on that data, but it is within their control. And what we know from Daniel Pink is that if the adult learner has the ability to set their own goal and select the data that informs that goal, that they're going to have a greater sense of autonomy and be more engaged and therefore be better learners. So, all the changes that have gone into our plan have gone in this direction. The other thing that we worked to do this year was to streamline the document. You can now read the first eight pages and understand our evaluation. You can now read the first eight pages and understand our evaluation plan. Last year, you had to read the first 48 pages to have a sense of what our plan entailed. So to be able to hand to our new teachers next week on Wednesday, an eight-page document and say, "If you read this, you'll know how we intend to support you and evaluate your performance in our school district moving forward." So in fact, we've broken out the top eight pages and call it the executive summary because that tells you everything you need to know. The following 70 pages of appendices are detailed, and that helps explain how we will do this, but the first eight pages tell you what we will do. There has been some frustration around the time that has gone into the teacher evaluation plan, but I will tell you that we are proud of the product that we've created. We have heard from the third of our teachers who participated this year that they found the instructional conversations to be valuable. We've heard from our administrators who spent an increased amount of time in classrooms talking about teaching and learning because of this, that they have found that time valuable as well. We'll keep working on it. We'll keep revising. This year, we will be bringing a broader group of administrators in as we will have department chairs at the high school beginning to help with the load of some of the informal evaluations that we've discussed, and we'll continue to keep the board apprised and the evaluation committee will continue to meet and revise. I do expect that we will do deeper work on the administrative evaluation plan this year moving forward. Currently, we continue to use the seed plan or the off-the-shelf state-provided plan for our supervision and evaluation of certified administrators in the district. And I think that there will be serious conversation about modifying that or individualizing that process to be more like our teacher process in Guilford now. And I'll continue to be parts of conversations at the state level to see if we can't further push this process in the direction of development rather than rating of teacher performance.
Just to be, just to be sure I heard you, for this year again, the teacher performance will not be coupled with the Smarter Balance test.
That is accurate.
Okay.
Teacher performance is not contingent upon student performance in the Smarter Balance assessment this year.
There's a lot of confusion.
Right. And even next year moving forward, I'll say that while we will begin to draw from Smarter Balance data, we will continue to have the autonomy to look at the data, choose how to write goals that the data speaks to us or speaks to, and then we will measure performance. At no point will teachers be rated by a raw measure of how their students perform on Smarter Balance compared to any other set of students, the ones they had the prior year, or any other subset of students, or a national aggregate of students. We will use the data to write individual goals to help each teacher become a better teacher. We're continuing to push to make this tool a tool for professional, individual professional development and not a tool to rank or sort teachers.
Okay. Other questions? Other comments? That's really outstanding. Yeah, I think there are a lot of districts are not doing this.
No, I think there's a lot of frustration because other districts aren't shaping this to be the tool that we're trying to shape it to be. I don't believe it requires action from you tonight, but we need to report that we've presented this document to you.
Well, it doesn't require action, but I think we should talk about it.
The surveys, we've spent a lot of time lately talking about surveys. The surveys at the end of this, were these the surveys that were, have we used these surveys? Did we, didn't we send out a survey at the end of the year for climate survey?
Yes, they're targeted surveys. They don't go out to every single parent in the district. They go out to students in selected grades, I want to say, I want to say four, eight, 10, or 11. It's targeted. I'll need to get, I need to reference the plan.
Okay, you shared with us some results.
Yes, I shared with you some results from one of the parent surveys. They are used to respond to one of the four components. Those are used to write goals about the performance of the school. They are the parent feedback goal. They make up 10% of any individual teacher's overall performance. And we use that data, and it's just one dataset, just the data from the survey, but it's used in a similar fashion. Every principal takes their response from these surveys, and they get student feedback, parent feedback, and teacher feedback from the building. The parents, the principals rather disaggregate that data and report out to their staff. Every principal has to set a goal based on what they've heard back from their students, their parents, and their staff members. So if we hear from the community that we want better communication, well, I'll use a real example. Last year at the high school, Mr. Masenti looked at his information, and he felt that the high school needed to increase awareness and concern around bullying issues. So the advisory program, which was newly constituted, was built around talking to students about bullying issues related in school, issues of kindness, issues of tolerance, issues of inclusion. And that theme was built through the advisory throughout the school year, everything from the deleted day that we talked with you about, students came in and spoke to you about. They were encouraged to go back and look at all of their social media and delete any of the mean communications, any of the unkind communications that had been included there. At the end of the year, Mr. Masenti sent out a very small independent survey that asked the same questions just around bullying and tried to determine, we wanted to communicate better around bullying. We did this together as a group. Every teacher who participated in the pilot chose to make that their parent's survey goal, and they reduced the numbers. They had lesser complaints about bullying and greater people reporting feeling knowledgeable and empowered to stop bullying. So he was able to report that he and every teacher had in fact, they achieved beyond the goal they set. So for 10% of their individual rating, they were able to state that they got a four, and that went into the formula for their overall annual rating. The two big components are about instruction in the classroom and the goals you set for your kids, but there are two smaller components as well. So yes, those surveys were administered at the end of this year only to target audiences. The principals have that data. I shared just a snippet of it with you because I want to allow them to unpack it before I share it more fully with you, but it is a part of this plan and will be used moving forward, continue to be used moving forward.
So there will be more information coming as a result?
Yes, you'll have a fuller report. Mr. Augustine chairs the district-wide climate committee. What we have done is we've taken the climate survey that's required by bullying legislation, the surveys that the states have recommended, that the state has recommended as part of their teacher evaluation, tried to reduce redundancies and collapsed those two together. So the information that we share out with you will both be about safety and climate, around bullying concerns in our school district, and issues about how the schools function and how well-satisfied our constituents feel, employees in the buildings, students in the buildings, and parents outside the buildings. Again, remember, this is a targeted survey. It didn't go out to every grade level. The survey that we have discussed is a broader survey, and while I know that there's no decisions made on that, I am working with Mrs. Hahn and Mr. Mitchell to create a structure that would allow us to sample every household in the community should we choose to go forward with a broader survey about parent experience last year.
All right, well, you know, we did just get this obviously tonight, and no hint from the state about what their views on this are?
There's lots of hints from the state because we didn't simply do this in a black box and submit it. So elements of this were vetted with the commissioner or with the chief talent officer over time during the school year. So I don't anticipate any substantial changes to the plan. I, in fact, do anticipate that they might tell me that some elements that I didn't include, they want to see included, and this is nitpicky, but I will share with you. Last year, they insisted that we include our plan for training our staff on how to implement the plan in the plan, and I felt that that was not accurate. How we train staff to use the plan is not the plan, it's implementation of the plan, and I felt was beyond the scope of the state, and so I didn't include it in the initial, you know, the initial proposal, and I was told I needed to. So we added it as a memorandum afterwards. I again didn't include that this year. I anticipate that we will be asked to include our plans for training our administrators and how will we roll this out, but as I continue to offer feedback to the state on how I think we should be partnering, I want to continue to model for the state how I believe we should be partnering, and so I anticipate that there will be no substantial concerns with our plan. Anything that I thought was pushing the envelope, I went and sat with Commissioner Fryer and told him what we intended to do and asked him for his feedback and have a sense that everything we've done in this plan will be supported substantially, will be supported.
So I guess what I'd like to suggest is that if people get a chance to read this and look at it and think about it and consider it, if we want to put it on next month's agenda or the month after that, fine, just let me know, all right? Because I know this is, this is a very, very important part of the, of what we do, or what you do, and indirectly what we do, obviously, and I think we identified this a couple of years ago as a major area that we needed to focus on as a district, and, you know, this certainly experienced last year suggests that we're moving in the right direction. But if people want to talk about it in more detail, I think we should do that if you want to. So just let me know.
Have it carried if there's just next month.
Yeah, okay. Eight point four?
Yeah, the next item was only to take advantage of the camera. We have noticed this through School Messenger and on GCTV, and it is posted on our website, but I did want to take advantage of the camera and remind the community that this Wednesday at 7:00 PM in this room, the Board of Education has scheduled a special meeting, the intent of which is to hear from community members, families and parents particularly, about their experiences through this past school year as we engaged in our first full year of implementation with the Common Core state standards. The Board wants to have an opportunity to hear about parent response to this past school year. The administration is interested in hearing that response so that as we continue to shape our work moving forward, we know that we're collecting as much information as we can. I'll note again that this will be the first of a series of meetings that will be conducted after Wednesday evening in smaller settings around the community at different school locations through the first half of the school year, where we'll have an opportunity to listen as we will on Wednesday, and hopefully to ask thoughtful questions and respond to questions as well in small, focused-group-style meetings. So I would encourage anybody who's watching this meeting tonight to please come out Wednesday evening and share your feedback with the Board of Education.
Okay.
The only purpose-
We actually did get one communication, I forgot to mention before, of someone asking if it was going to be televised Wednesdays.
I don't know. We hadn't really talked about it. I don't, I don't know.
I think of a film it?
I was thinking of it more as a conversational workshop meeting, which we don't televise. We have only been in the habit of recording and televising our monthly meetings, and so no, I have not arranged to have it recorded or televised.
I know that there are a lot of community people who are shy, who would prefer not to speak in front of a camera, and since we're really looking for maximum input, I would prefer that we not televise this.
We didn't have a second meeting scheduled for the month. I kind of thought of it as the workshop meeting and was thinking along same lines, conversational, not, but.
I haven't had, nobody's asked me about them. But, I mean, we don't ordinarily televise anything other than regular meetings. I think that's the only thing in my experience that we've ever done.
We will have minutes, there will be minutes taken after.
Sure, okay. All right, anything else on that?
Nope, nothing else on that. In a similar vein, I wanted to inform the Board that this week we have our annual administrative retreat scheduled. We will be meeting all day, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday as a leadership team. The administrative retreat includes all of our certified administrative staff. So Mr. Jarvis, our athletic director, all of our assistant principals, deans, all participate. The retreat this year is broken into three large chunks. On Wednesday, we will be focusing on improving our instructional practice. On Thursday, we will be focusing on improving our systems and procedures, and on Friday, we will be focusing on improving our communication, both individually as administrators and systemically as a school system. Mr. Bowden and Dr. Keen and I will be leading each of those three days respectively. I would imagine if I asked you to guess, you'd be able to identify which one of us will be leading which day. But we've worked collaboratively to shape a day, to shape a retreat that we believe builds on a common theme and focuses on three areas that are of paramount importance to us. We have talked with this board repeatedly about how we're trying to improve the systems and the practices and the procedures within the district to be more efficient. Instruction remains at the core of who we are, what we're about, and why we're here, and communication is simply going to be the vehicle that makes all of the work successful or not. I think that we have communicated well in the past, but I think that we have room to improve. I know that we can communicate better moving forward, and Friday we'll be focused on that. So we're excited about this work, and I'll be sharing out with you at a later date about how that retreat time goes. On August 25th at 8:00 in the morning, I'm happy to announce that this is the last district convocation which we will be scheduling off-site. We will be meeting on the 25th at Woodwinds in Branford because right now we do not have an appropriate facility in the school system where we can bring together all of our staff and appropriately work with our staff. We don't do convocation around a simple auditorium-style welcome-back message from the stage. We want our staff to be at tables. We want them to be working cooperatively and collaboratively in the way that we expect our students to be working and engaging with the work in the classroom. But a year from this August, we will be able to schedule this event in the new Commons at our new high school. So I am happy to invite you to join us for the last time off-site for our convocation. Any portion that you can join, please know that you're welcome. We plan on a continental breakfast beginning at 8:00. We will begin the program promptly at 8:30. If you could only make it to have coffee and welcome our teachers back, please know you're welcome. And if you'd like to stay for the event, Mr. Bloss generally makes comments when he is available and helps to welcome the staff back. We do not have an exciting guest speaker from out of the district. I know that in past years, we had Sugata Mitra, a TED Talk award winner. We did work to engage a relatively local author who has written about the growth mindset and is really exciting, and we were very excited to find out she was free on that date, and then when we found out what she charges after her very successful TED Talk, we will be doing it ourselves. So we're thinking about maybe referencing her work, maybe even sharing a portion of her TED Talk because that's free, but we won't be bringing her in to join our staff. It really reminded us what favors Sugata Mitra did for us. He is one of the most, most viewed speakers at TED, and he came to us twice over that summer and did great work with our district, and did it, I think, because he was impressed with Dr. Keen, did not charge us significantly. We were happy to have him, but we will be doing it ourselves this year.
When is the evaluation?
It is the morning of August 25th. It starts at 8:00 AM at Woodwinds in Branford. I also just wanted to note for the Board, and I know that you'll have an opportunity to meet her later this year, but I wanted to let you know that I will again be hosting an administrative intern this year. Dr. Michelle Bagwell from UConn is working on her executive leadership certification. She's working towards hers superintendent certification. She'll be spending time in district this year, watching how we work, joining leadership team meetings. She will be joining us for the three days of the retreat. I believe she'll be here Wednesday evening for our special meeting. I won't introduce her at that meeting, that doesn't seem appropriate, but at a later date, I'll introduce Dr. Bagwell to all of you. She'll be spending time with us this year. You'll see her about at different events or different meetings that we hold. In your packet, you did receive a proposed workshop schedule for the year. I'll remind you that these always change, but it does give you a sense of thinking as we begin the school year. And just as a reference, we noted on each of the dates where both the policy committee or the newly structured curriculum committee, about which we are very excited, will meet prior to. So you can see both the topics and the agenda items that we view. Obviously, we know more for the early part of the year rather than the later part of the year. And we want to note that on November 24th, we've already added a second topic. In addition to the wellness report, we plan a math, mathematics update for the Board on that evening. It's on a policy committee evening, but at the workshop itself, we'll be talking about mathematics instruction and sequencing in the district on that evening. And I'll, I'll just note that mathematics will probably be a topic of conversation through curriculum meetings this school year as well.
Question, you have September 22nd and January 26th on international baccalaureate?
Yes, we know that we're going to need more than one meeting to be able to talk about international baccalaureate, so we will have different levels of presentation on those meetings, and they are front-loaded because this Board will need to know enough in order to make an informed decision as part of the budget process. I'll also note that Mr. Masenti and his team have talked about having international baccalaureate information that will be made available at the middle-school levels as well as the high school level at back-to-school nights. I know that he's been talking with Mrs. Walker as well as Mr. Hamel, and we'll be planning informational evenings for the community prior to budget decisions that need to be made as part of this year as well. Yes, we knew that it would take more than one evening to get through, well, we'll move to get through with the fourth.
Last year, we had a excellent session with Ginny on special ed, and I would-
Yes, we, we knew that it would take more than one evening to get through, well, we moved to get through week before.
Last year, we had a excellent session with Ginny on special ed and I would hope that we do another this year.
I know that she'd be happy to redo that. That would probably fall later.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, happy to add that topic, thank you.
And one other thought about future topics, you mentioned Mr. Masenti and bullying, not that he bullies, he doesn't, but I think it would be valuable to have a session on student culture.
We could talk more, put something together.
Anybody else who has any ideas about that, just let me know and we can kind of try to focus on that a little bit and see what, what we think the good workshop. Because I, the workshop meetings are great, you know, they're, they're, you know, much, they're very substantive, very valuable. And while I'm thinking about it, the, the curriculum committee, we have, I haven't made appointments to the curriculum committee because I, I see it as a committee of the whole, frankly. I, I just, I think that's something that we're all going to want to go to. If you can't make it, you can't make it. But I, I think this is something that is probably not appropriate to do in a committee of three or five. So I think unless somebody has any strong feelings to the contrary, I think that's what we should do.
Yeah, I thought that the retreat, we decided it should be a committee of the whole.
I, I guess, yeah, yeah, okay.
And then the only other item I have is I'm just excited to let you know, I let you know previously that we had signed a contract with Dr. Borland from Teachers College at University of Columbia, Columbia University. Dr. Keen and I have had our first meeting on July 30th. We met with Dr. Borland. We gave him a lot of history and documentation and everything that sort of exists here in the district currently. We have scheduled October 2nd and 3rd as full dates for Dr. Borland to be in district. He will begin, we're beginning to schedule focus group meetings for him on those two days. He will meet with groups of teachers at different levels, administrators at different levels. The evening of Thursday, October 2nd is going to be scheduled as a community evening where parents will be invited in to speak with Dr. Borland, who will be given a space and any materials that he needs. And we won't be there. And he'll be there to run a focus group meeting and talk to parents. As in the community, any parent wishes to attend about their experiences in the process. And at the end of those two days, he will then sit and regroup with us because we have two further days after this. He will identify the areas that he wants to look at more closely and we'll bring him back for two other dates at some time. We haven't planned what those dates are after the October dates.
Did you say October 2nd?
October 2nd, 3rd.
Is back to school night at the high school? Would that be a significant?
We did note that that was a conflict. We, yes, we recognize it as a conflict, but, but my takeaway from many of the meetings is that the concerns about our high achieving students are less significant at the high school where we have AP courses and honors courses and a degree of self-selection. So we didn't, early in the school year is full of conflict.
No, I, I, I get that entirely. Just making sure that we were aware.
We were in fact trying to push it into a September date and couldn't come up with a conflict free pair of days. We settled on October 2nd and 3rd recognizing the high school conflicts, but thank you for noting it.
So if a high school parent wanted to communicate with him, how, how, is that going to be facilitated some way?
We'll have a process.
Well, we will open up a process for that to happen. Either a second meeting at his return or we will, we will make a mailbox for Dr. Borland on our new website and, and ask people to drop comments. We'll figure out a process. I'll talk with him about how he wants to facilitate that.
Okay. And, and one of the things, we've, we've talked a lot as a Ford in the last six months about the, the math tracking, is part of his mandate to look at that issue?
Yes.
Or can it be part of his mandate?
It is. We spent, we spent a significant amount of time with the new math curriculum, with the, the sequencing chart that was created last year. And I know that in various focus group meetings, that that's a topic that will come up. We have asked him specifically to comment on how we support our, our highest achieving students in the area of mathematics.
Okay. All right.
And I believe that completes my report for this year.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments? All right. Okay, Board Agenda, item 9.1 is to act on various personnel items and there are, first of all, some resignations. Colleen McCosky, Donna Bonjourney and Kellen Metzler. Is there a motion to ratify their resignations?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then a series of appointments, six. Jessica Jolene, kindergarten teacher at Cox. So are they, are the full day kindergarten teachers, are they all hired up or is that, are we in an okay position on that?
Yes, kindergartners all set there, 12 appointments, Mr. Bloss.
Did I miss, oops, I'm sorry. Up, 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 up. Sorry? Sorry, 12 appointments.
Maybe nervous.
No, no. That's right. It's a attrition hiring freeze or something. So the full day kindergarten teachers are all?
Yes, all those positions. They are not part of the vacancies that I noted earlier.
Okay. So there are 12 appointments. Forgive me, Jessica Jolene, Cox Elementary School Kindergarten. Jill Meglin, Leet Elementary School, 4th grade. Teresa Donarumo, art teacher at Jones and Leet. Caitlin McCarthy, special education at Cox. Brent Sharp, I'm going to say Sharp-Pontier, but it's probably Sharpentier. How, how do you pronounce it?
I believe he is Carpenter.
Carpenter, all right. Adam, social studies. Amy Seveney, Jones Special Education. Sarah Burke, Jones Special Education. William Wilson. Adam's Middle School Language Arts. David Giglio, or Giglio, I suppose, depends on whether it's.
Giglio.
Yeah. Caroline Barron, and I'm sorry, David is at Social Studies at Guilford High. Caroline Barron, Adam's Middle School Spanish. Samantha Talmage, Cox Music. Caitlin Charles, a social worker to be assigned to the Melissa Jones. So is there a motion to ratify those appointments?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. 9.2 is the budget transfers for 2013 and 14. Do you want to take the lead on this?
Certainly. Last month, we approved a set of budget transfers. This month, we are being asked to approve another small set of budget transfers. In total, the budget transfers last month and this month come to $621,000 coming out of various categories and going into other categories. So it's a little more than 1% of our budget, just to kind of put this in perspective. And the reason that we've been asked to approve the additional transfers now are some of the things I touched on earlier in my report regarding the financial statements. One is our additional payment of $250,000 to reduce the deficit in the medical self-insurance fund. And the other is to put some funding back into the transportation category related into a variety of things, including our purchase of the remaining obligation on our fuel contract. So we're asked to approve, I'll go through the categories. We're putting $248,000 into benefits and $83,000 into transportation. And that will be coming from salaries, $46,000. Purchased, purchased services, $20,000. Tuition, $125,000. Supplies, $50,000. And capital, $60,000.
Fifty three, fifty.
Fifty three. So.
Yeah, and I think it's important to, you know, and I missed John Ireland being here to remind us about the capital line, of course. So that $60,000 removal from capital follows a $250,000 increase in capital last month. So in effect, we've, we've still added $190,000 to the capital line.
Exactly.
That, that we were able to do because of the savings and salaries and tuition predominantly. So, you know, it's not like we're raiding the capital line, which I feel, I'm sorry, I feel compelled, you know.
I appreciate that, being noted. And if it looks like some of the money was moved in and then moved out or moved out and then moved in, it is only because of the agreement, the decision to make the additional medical payment that some of those things look like they've been moved twice. It's just worth noting.
Yes, fine. So is there a motion, you're making a motion that will approve these transfers?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 9.3, receiver, possible action to special education transportation bid. Do you want to also talk about this?
Certainly, yep. This year, as we've done for the past, I don't know how many years, we've, we've invited bids for the special education bus runs, transporting students to various facilities on an individual run basis. So we're not awarding a contract to a provider for all the runs. We look at the low bidder on each run. We then allow STA per our contract with STA to take the opportunity to, to take any of those if they can beat the, if they can beat the bid. And then after consideration of our own experience with those vendors and so on, we, we determine how the bid should be awarded. I do not have a schedule of the low bids. We discussed it at the operations subcommittee and we, what we discussed doing was approving the administration to go ahead one by one and choose the lower bidder on each of the bus runs.
And is the intention to award it to the low bidder?
Yes.
Are there, are there any aggravating circumstances? I know that we, last year we got a, a low bid from somebody that we were not entirely, neither the administration nor the Board was entirely convinced that this vendor would be able to provide the services.
Sure, sure.
We have no special circumstances. We're comfortable moving forward and awarding to the low bidders in each case.
And either, so that'll be either the new vendor or STA?
Yes.
Okay. So then that's a motion to enable the, authorize the administration to enter into contracts with the low bidders for each of those runs, whether STA or the other low bidder.
As per STA.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then the tennis court has upgrades and a bid for resurfacing. Did you talk about that?
We talked about it very briefly. Linda, if you might want to explain this.
Would you like to explain the tennis court bid?
Sure. So the bid was for renovation repairs to the Guilford High School tennis courts. We did submit, send out bids to various vendors. Only one vendor submitted a bid back to us and that was Hinding Tennis, oh, course of West Haven. It did include an alternate piece other than the repair and renovation, which is some special line striping. We are requesting that the bid be awarded to Hinding Tennis Courts of West Haven for a total bid of $34,750. Their base bid was $34,500 and the alternate for the special line striping was $325. So that totals the $34,750. And this amount was lower than the amount that we projected for the project, so Cliff Burnham is confident that this is a, a good bid and that we should award it to them for this price.
Okay. Any, any, do you have any questions, comments, thoughts?
I approve that we approve the bid.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Now we are up to 9.5, which is recommendations from the policy committee relating to graduation requirements.
Yes. So the policy committee brought this to the Board last month as a received item and are now asking for the Board's vote. These are very small changes at this point to the graduation requirement, policy and regulation. We expect to be back in the late fall to be looking at more substantial changes, but because we have switched from CAP testing in most cases to smarter balance testing, we did need to update this to be current with current practices. So the policy has identified that beginning with the class of 2016, students will be expected to fulfill the post CAP assessment standards as established by the state of Connecticut. We don't want to say more than that at this point because we simply don't know how that's going to play out. So I am making a motion that the Board accept the change to this policy as stated.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay. And then likewise for the regulation, there are minimal on the first, second and third pages, sorry, on the fourth page, textual changes. One, again, to identify this, this CAP requirement for the class of 2015, but not necessarily post that class. And then on, on the third and fourth pages, there are literally text to make a grammar correction. So I'm making a motion that the Board accept these changes to the regulation 6310, graduation requirements.
Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, 9.6, this is relating to superintendent's contract terms for 2014, 15. Just to let people know, Dr. Freeman is operating as, as is the practice in the state of Connecticut under, under a three-year contract. The first year and then typically a year gets tacked on to the end, although depending on the district, whatever terms the, the parties agree on. We, we have a little bit of an unusual contract in Guilford compared to some districts. We have a, a, not a built-in salary increase from year to year, rather we have a, a merit pay system, if, if you will. It's probably more than almost any other contract I'm familiar with in public education anyway, where we have got a defined set of eight criteria and say that depending on how those criteria have been met or not met, that the, the increase from year to year will be somewhere between 0 and 6%. We have spent, we spent a fair amount of time last month in executive session talking about our views as a Board of where, of the, of the performance on those eight criteria. We also met again tonight in special session, a committee of four of us. Dr. Myers, Ms. Renner, Mr. Sands and myself met with Dr. Freeman last week and, and spent quite a while talking about some of the, the, the issues, some of the things that we thought were, were tremendous successes. And I think we all feel that, that the, the successes are very substantial and, you know, we can talk about them a little bit in a, in a second. But it, it has been, I think it's the consensus of the Board that we believe that it would be fair under the circumstances based on the eight criteria, based on the, the performance of the district, based on the performance of the entire team to increase your total compensation package for 2014, 15 by 4.95% in a way divided among the three. We do also do it a little bit differently here, that we don't hide compensation elements. We've been very hawkish on that through the years. I know a lot of districts, it looks like the person is making $150,000 when in fact he's making $225,000 because of other things. Well, we don't really, we've never done that here. There's only, there are only three elements of compensation, salary, medical benefits line and the annuity, which vests gradually. I, I just want to make that clear to everybody that, that this isn't the total number, the, the amount in his contract for this year is only going to be met if he stays here another five years. And so now you are starting to vest, obviously, for your first year and your second year gradually, but it's actually, again, Mr. Ireland's idea, I don't have to say that.
Thanks, Mr. Ireland.
And, but, you know, look, it was, it's, it's.
I'm in no hurry to go anywhere.
It's a clever, thoughtful, meaningful way to structure a contract. I, you know, it was, it was very good. So, so we'll, I think, figure out how, which, which way to divide those. It's really up to you. It costs us the same. So, you know, I guess I'd like to just open it up to the Board and, and comments people have. We did, we did talk about, well, I'll just open up to the Board now, I'll stop talking. Who would like to add anything?
Well, I think it should be made clear that Dr. Friedman met and exceeded all of our expectations. And the fact that the salary increase that we decided on is really 5/6 of the maximum does not mean that he performed 5/6 maximum. We also had to take into account other factors besides achievement. So you have not only achieved what we expect, you have helped our students achieve much, much better. And for that, we're grateful.
Other comments, thoughts?
Just echo what's been said. We also talked about issues of communication and continuing to build on what's already a strength and making it a, continuing to be an even stronger strength. And as part of this, I don't know if you made that in the form of a motion.
Not yet, but.
Yeah. Of course, it'd be extending the contract by a year.
Yeah, right.
If I may, I, I would like to say, I mean, we talked about a whole host of things. I would like to point out specifically that, you know, one of our jobs as a Board is, is to hire a superintendent and evaluate. It seems one of the important jobs that you have among many is, is to hire administrative staff. And so certainly one of the things that came up in our discussion is, is really how impressed we are with the, the staff that you have brought to this district. we are with the staff that you have brought to this district, that have really grown our programs and have done really wonderful things with their staff and with our students. So that's one thing. And another thing that I brought up in our discussion, that I would like to repeat, is that your collaboration with this Board, your response to our questions, to concerns, to being willing to meet with us, to have your staff meet with us, has been really remarkable. And I, as a Board member, really appreciate your willingness to be available in the way that you have been, and to allow your staff to meet with us as well.
I mean, I just want to mention a couple of things. As far as I'm concerned, the progress that we've made in special education, ignoring everything else, would be enough to justify anything that we do here tonight, because that area is now really a success. And it's a statewide success. I think that really, there were so many lessons to learn from that. And there are districts that were in the exact same place as we were three years ago that decided to do it differently, and it did not work out very well. And so, it's, I think, I think we could not be more pleased with the progress that's been made in delivering better services for lower cost. And that's what we asked for. It's, you know, I remember, you know, we've all been at Port of Finance meetings where they said, "Well, you're not really going to do that, are you?" In effect. And I understand the skepticism, because we've been talking about it for 15 years. Right? Fifteen... I mean, it's easily 15 years. And, yeah. And so, I can't begin... I cannot overstate the importance of the progress that's been made in that area. It's, I think, that in itself. The implementate... Or the decision-making process with the full-day kindergarten, and the successful... What I expect is going to be the successful implementation of it in a challenging budget time, to do that at the numbers that we came in at last year, I think is really terrific. And, but again, it's not coincidence. It's because of the progress that was made in special education. It was the progress that's been made in hiring generally. I'm going to... I know that... We all know it, but I think it deserves to be said publicly, that we talked a little bit about the teacher evaluation program tonight. And I don't think that people really understand the amount of behind-the-scenes work you've done with the Commissioner and in Hartford on that issue. You know, because... And you could go two routes. You could try to, you know, to go on the front page of the Hartford Current and say, you know, "Look at what I'm doing." And that's a, you know, I mean, I just, you know, that is an accepted process. I don't think it's necessarily, particularly in this circumstance, one that would be likely to lead to a positive result, but it's a process. It's one alternative. The alternative you did was to do this all behind the scenes, to sit down with a cup of coffee and data, and just work it through. Talk to people who really didn't have an incentive to listen to you, frankly. You know, they didn't have an incentive, other than somebody who's in a good district with a teaching staff and administrative staff that is excellent and cares, and that you... We just didn't need to do it the way that the state told us we had to do it. And you've got a degree of flexibility into the system that not only benefits Guilford, but it benefits anybody who wants to follow. Now, if you want to do the cookie-cutter model, great, but a lot of people don't. And I think that that hasn't been... I don't... You haven't got the kind of... The credit for that that I think, frankly, you deserve. The recognition by... You know, I'm not in the full-time public education business. I, you know, we all spent a lot of time on it, obviously, here tonight, but when you get recognized by your peers with the UConn Award for the Outstanding Public School Administrator, when... By being invited into the suburban school network, that's meaningful to me. I don't know how you all feel about it, but, you know, if people that are high-achieving public educators think that you are part of that group, okay, that's data. To me, that's evidence. That's something that I think we should pay attention to and recognize. So I fully support what I think the Board has settled on, arrived at, and I think we are... I think I represent the views of the Board as a whole, that we're very, very pleased with the job that you're doing, and hope to continue to work with you moving forward.
Thank you very much. I look forward to a continued partnership.
So did you make a motion, Mr. Kazin? Is that...
I just did.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
So we still have the same old superintendent? That's good. Glad we're not...
Adding a year?
Yes, go ahead.
Adding a year?
Yeah, I think that was part of the motion.
Part of the motion.
Yep. Okay. Unfinished business? Anything? Why do I keep putting this on the agenda? I've really got to stop.
We got communication back on. We'll get rid of this one for the next meeting.
One thing at a time.
Yeah, that's right. It's incredible. Ms. Fiandello was... It was a little hectic this month, because she was away, and, you know, whatever. Policy Committee report, is there anything?
No, no, we have... We're not meeting until September.
Operations Committee?
Covered it. There are a lot of projects that are still today going on at the schools, but Mr. Burnham and his staff are hopeful that everything will be ready to open in a safe fashion, and that accommodations are being made where things have to be shifted a little bit.
We may need some flexibility in the first weeks of school, but we're making good progress on important projects that we didn't want to delay. I will thank everybody in the community for their understanding as we come back to school if we're still a work in progress for those first few weeks, but they're important upgrades. We did not want to delay this work.
The High School Building Committee is there... I guess I should note that four of us took a tour of the building today. Some of, I think, the other four, a couple are going tomorrow. Pretty impressive. Pretty impressive. You know, I'll have to say, and I'm... It's looking like a school. Looking like a big building. But it's looking like a school, and I can see... I can actually, I think it's falling into place, and we are... I pinned the construction manager there a little bit and said, "So is it really going to be on time?" He says, "Yeah." He says, "Yeah, it looks like it." So, you know...
For tracking on time, it's very impressive. The Building Committee does meet tomorrow evening. Mr. Bowden will be covering the Building Committee tomorrow evening. With Mr. Masenti in my absence, Building Committee continues to work hard through the summer. We're on budget, on schedule. It's very exciting.
It's going to be a terrific facility, and on budget. You know, and now you're getting to the point where there's not that many, you know, unknowns, right? You're... The demolition of this building.
The next big unknown is only in the demo of this building. We're out of the ground. We're beyond any of the danger zones for the new construction. You're right, the only hurdle left, the only unknown hurdle left is the... Well, weather this winter and the demo here.
Yep.
You know, we've looked... Some of us have been looking at those two-dimensional plans for three years. And I'm... My learning disability is, I don't see it in two dimensions until tonight, when I walked into a three-dimensional thing and was in the middle of it, especially standing in Mr. Masenti's office. And he was very proudly pointing out where his office is. And I could see a building. It really is going to be everything we hoped and envisioned that it should be. So I'm thrilled.
Good, okay. Town Committee Liaison, is anything? Is there anything? Okay. Public questions?
I have just two quick questions.
Yeah, whatever you want. I was going to... I would say, "Take your time," but take your time.
No, everybody's busy. One was about the forum on Wednesday. I was wondering if there's going to be any kind of moderation, any kind of time limit for the speakers?
Yeah, I'll tell you the way we usually do that on things like that. Partly, it depends on how many people are there, and partly, it's always tricky, because you don't want to have one person monopolizing, you know, talking for an hour.
Yeah.
On the other hand, you know what? It's never been a problem. It really hasn't. We've never really had to say, you know, "Could you..." Sometimes we've said, "Well, give somebody else a turn, and we can come back to you." I mean, that we've done, right? I mean, that's, I think, that's totally fine. But I don't... I'm not anticipating that there's going to be any kind of formal, you know, quote-unquote "rules." But I'd ask people to be reasonable, that's all.
And Mr. Gloss is very good at managing the...